Form in Eaglewood, there's one way in.
It's the same parking lot.
Okay.
Sir, please. Por favor. Gracias.
I'd like to call the order of Avalon City Council on Tuesday, October 21st. If you please stand and pledge allegiance. Yeah. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If we could please have a few moments of silence until the pastor John Paul. Please be seated. Call please.
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Here.
Councilmember Ponce?
Here.
Councilmember Schickling?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Lavelle?
Here.
Mayor Marshall?
Here. Are there any announcements or written communications?
Uh, yes. Um, some information regarding the statewide special election on Tuesday, November 4th, 2025. Avalon's vote center location will be the parish hall at St. Catherine of Alexandria's Catholic Church. The days of operation will be November 1st through November 3rd, 10:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. And on Election Day, November 4th, 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Just a reminder on the multiple ways you could return your, uh, vote by mail ballot, uh, one being a Dropbox, um, which is located outside the Avalon Library, uh, in person at any of the 250 vote centers throughout LA County, and by mail. Uh, just remember, it must be postmarked by November 4th. All election information can be found at www.lavote.gov and www.cityofavalon.gov. Another announcement would be city staff received four written communications regarding item five, options for city council in considering tenant protections and rent control measures. Copies are on file in the city clerk's office and have been distributed to city council.
And there is still time to register to vote if people still want to vote.
No, today is it?
I believe today was the deadline. There is the emergency, uh, I, I believe you could, uh, vote that day.
Fortunately.
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you. Department head reports?
Good afternoon, Mayor, city council members and city staff. Jackie Cordero, Public Works, Public Works Director. Public Works has been really busy. Um, they are working on several renovation projects throughout the off-season. Uh, we'll be working on the Casino Way benches, the fuel dock roof and landscaping, guard rail on East Whitley, fuel dock restrooms, and Green Pier women's restroom. More to come on all these projects. We are finishing, um, we're doing some finishing touches on the Sembroft Fountain and scoreboard. The lighting will be added to the fountain and the scoreboard should be up and functioning by next week. So they've been working really hard on that this week. Thank you again for your patience. These two projects had a lot of setbacks. Um, one of the setbacks that hinders all our projects here on, um, Avalon, uh, are the consistent water leaks. Um, this last, after this last rain, we had one major line break on Beacon and Metropole. You saw the crews working there, um, really, really hard. Um, this leak lasts, the repair lasted three days. It was extensive and complex because the leak was first hard to find, and then when we found it, the repair was on a T. So it required a lot more supplies, a lot more time, a lot more labor. Um, and I just wanted to take a minute to thank the crew for just working so hard these last two weeks, especially on that saltwater leak. Um, they kept their spirits high, had great attitudes through the whole process, even though we're all tired and sleep deprived. Um, I also wanted to thank Avalon Smokehouse and Catalina Coffee and Cookie Company for providing us with lunch and much-needed coffee in the wee hours. Um, I really just appreciate and love this community for coming together when we're in need. Uh, thank you. Any questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, council, city staff. Scott, welcome back. Michael Alegria, Fire Chief, City of Avalon. Uh, September calls, 98, total calls, 48 were medical. We're at 932 for the year. We got word today, our engine, fire engine inspection in Florida will be, take place on November 18th. Uh, it's close, so we'll be out there for two days, driving it, pumping it, trying to break it before we ship it out to this way. I believe Dave last council mentioned, we got an AFG grant, over $200,000 for washer/dryer at our station for our turnout, so we don't have to ship them off anymore, and 40 sets of gear for each person, so that, that's gonna help. And then I'd like to have these two stand up. Seems like we're doing this every other week, but Frank Menudo announced his retirement for November 27th, November 25th. So Marcus Watts is our newest firefighter. Juan Cisneros bumps up to be an engineer, and Nick Lappel's been a reserve for a few months. He's been on the island for eight years, head, head guy at Emerald Bay. If you wanna go out there, give him a call, nice beach. But Nick's one of our reserves and on the list also to be hired as a firefighter as well. Just wanted them to show their face. And we'll come back once they have all their proper uniform and it, we'll do a formal introduction and also when Frank's leaving.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Evening, Mayor, city staff, city council. Captain Matthew King, LA County Sheriff's in Avalon, on the island. Since our last meeting, uh, we had 357 log entries by the deputies. Uh, of those, 276 were observations made by them and 81 were calls for service. There were 11 traffic stops, uh, nine pedestrian stops, and there were five arrests. Once again, high numbers of arrests were domestic violence. Unfortunately, three of those were domestic violence. We are working right now with, uh, ABC to hopefully do some alcohol, um, programs on the island, so maybe we can do some stuff with the local bars and restaurants and, and stuff like that. So, um, I don't wanna put out details, obviously, but that's stuff we're working on now, hopefully to get some, um, enforcement of over-serving and that kind of thing. So that's what we're planning on doing, uh, hopefully in November. Um, we have three reserves scheduled to work the half marathon on the 8th, and, uh, we'll have a full staff of deputies in addition to those. Jazz Trax was another great year for us, very, uh, great crowd and, uh, much better than the, every other weekend this summer, so it was fantastic.
President?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Kevin Schmidt, Harbor Master. Ashbrooke. Um, so we made it through our, we'll call it our first storm of the season, even though it wasn't much of a storm for us, mainly a rain event. Uh, we didn't have anything significant in the way of damage or anything like that, so we'll take that. Um, speaking of that, we're working on getting the harbor ready for, uh, winter season, so you may have noticed that some floats are gone. Fuel dock's out, it's sitting on a mooring. We'll try and get that out of the water by the end of the week. Um, tomorrow, we're gonna start taking out the club docks, um, so those will be, uh, leaving soon, getting out of the water and get up to the warehouse. Joe's Rent a Boat, they've removed most of their mooring, so the harbor's changing its look here for the wintertime. Uh, however, um, we're still busy. Uh, we're still, this weekend, we were sold out on the inside, so we were sending people out to the sconce. So, so we're still getting a lot of boat traffic. Uh, the weather's still nice, so it'll probably stay that way, you know, for the next couple of weeks at least in terms of, uh, boats coming over on the weekends. Right now, we're working on a large grant project, uh, application for the South Beach restoration. Hopefully, at least one or two of you have heard about this. Um, and right now, we're trying to, uh, get community engagement, community input, uh, so we can, uh, include this in our, our grant application. So you can go onto the city's website, there's a, I think it's a relatively easy, uh, survey to take, uh, six multiple choice and one fill in the blank. So, uh, we, please, anybody who's watching out there, go do that. The more community input we get, the better this project can be. So, uh, we're gonna keep working on that. Eric and, Eric and Ryan are here, they're helping us with that, that grant application, so, uh, we're pretty close. And then last but not least, I'll probably get in trouble for this, but, um, so this is a plug for a fundraiser for one of my favorite programs, okay? The Avalon Ocean Club. Tomorrow night, there is a fundraiser at the locker room. It's trivia night, teams of four, okay? I'm sure there's a ton of great prizes, I just don't know what they are right now. Um, so if you'd like to come out and support, it's a great program, Dempsey and Madison, you know, uh, they have the one-man canoes, they do all sorts of really cool stuff with those kids, so tomorrow night, 6:30, you know where. And then for stats, so for, uh, the first few weeks of October, 957 arrivals for a total of 3,611, uh, mooring nights, which is about a 7% increase over last year at the same time, so we will definitely take that one. And then for us, we had, uh, one baywatch assist, two sites, two emergency medicals, 11 enforcement, and 151 security patrols.
So what are the enforcement, 11 enforcement?
Those are usually, so, those are different from a site, well, actually, they're included in the same category, so like, those are mainly, like, for a noise complaint, or telling somebody to shut down the music or turn down the music, or, you know, you're tied up in the wrong place, that's what goes under enforcement. And then there's subcategories where we actually write a site, those are, that's what the overlap is for those.
Questions?
Any questions? Okay.
You're ready?
Matt's coming.
I guess we have our pecking order now.
Hey, if we do a team of four tomorrow night, does that count as a Brown Act violation?
Good evening, council, didn't wanna follow the rec department.
Matt Baker, Finance Director. Don't have much of an update, other than I will have auditors on-site next week, as, uh, we're putting together our fiscal 25 financials, and so, um, sometime later this fall or winter, we will be sharing those results with council.
Questions? No, thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council. I'm David Hart, Community Service Department. Um, with the Friends of the Library, we installed a pocket library across the street over at, um, Avalon Kids Park. Um, this will give the, the public free, um, access to books to enjoy our park-in. Um, we are, um, they haven't come in yet, uh, but hopefully they'll be here next week. We have two aderondic chairs, they're gonna go there as well to make it a little bit more relaxing for your stay while you're there. Um, on October 10th, I attended the first-ever Park Funding Summit Program. Um, the RPOSD, otherwise known as the LA County Regional Park in Open Space District, brought together the California Natural Resource Agency, California State Parks, Wildlife Conference, Conservation Board, Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy, Rivers and Mountains Conservancy, and the Baldwin Parks in Urban Watershed Conservancy, as well as the State Park Program to Loma Alta Park in Altadena. The event brought together more than 150 participants from 65 cities, including park agencies, school districts, nonprofits, community-based organizations, and all five conservation corps. Attendees heard directly from the funders announcing over $1 billion in future park and open space grants, and connected with potential partners and grantmakers to strengthen upcoming projects. Um, I personally was able to, um, network and connect with those, um, that had, that had funding sources that can help enhance many of our own projects here. So we're really excited, um, they're excited to be able to hand that money out, they're, it's a big push for it. Um, one of the things that they talk about, which was really cool, is, um, connecting yourself with organizations such as Townsend, um, who really kinda have that, um, in with those groups, and unders, and understanding how these grants work, um, to be able to get that funding, so, um, I just wanted to give a big shout-out to Townsend, um, for being a partner with us in these grant opportunities. This is a busy month for us in community services. We just had our annual Fall Festival on, on Friday, October 17th, with multiple food, game booths, and music by Hot Off the Range. There was also fun Minute to Win and Community Games, um, where kids can play these quick minute games to win prizes. Um, I was proud of my staff, Marissa Maronis and Constance Rucks, for, um, setting the whole event up, um, their creativity, the decorations that they gave, um, the venue a true fall, um, feel. If you're impressed with Fall Fest, um, wait till you have, wait till you have to face your fears at the Haunted Hall on Friday, October 24th. We are taking over Tremont, Tremont Hall and creating a creepy, nimerish event. From 6:00 to 7:00 p.m., we will have a light fright for the little ones, and parents can go with the little ones for free. Then from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m., we will have the full fright. Each pass will be just $5. Come if you dare. On October 26th, we will be hosting our next primetime event, Stargazing. This event will be held at the house, um, that's just directly below Wrigley Mansion. Um, you will meet us, uh, for the primetimers, those are the 55 and over group. Um, you will meet us here at City Hall, and Circuit will drive us up, um, to the home. Up there, we'll be enjoying some charcuterie, as well as Kathleen Carlyle will be teaching us about astronomy, and we will have access to the sky through telescopes. We still have spots left, but need to fill it by tomorrow, so go ahead and call us here at City Hall for more information. This Saturday, Sunday, October 25th and 26th, is the First Annual Mermaid Festival, produced by the Catalina Art Association. There'll be booths that will be selling everything from mermaid tails, mermaid jewelry, mermaid artwork, um, anything mermaid, as well as mermaid experiences, live music, mermaid movies on the beach at night, and, excuse me, as I correct myself, mer-men are also welcome. Our annual children's Halloween, Halloween Parade will be held on Front Street, Friday, October 31st. Lineup will be from 3:30 p.m., at 3:30 p.m. at Old Ben Park. Parade will start at 4:00 p.m. Afterwards, we'll be hosting a rave beyond the grave on the stage from 5:00 to 6:00 p.m. for those little creepers. Um, is there any questions? No?
No, but you forgot to mention in the Mermaid Fest about the rubber ducky derby.
Oh, they will also be having a, um, a rubber, it, it is a fundraiser, um, I believe for the Interact, Rotary Interact.
Yeah, it's Avalon Interact, yeah.
Yeah. And, and they will be doing a rubber ducky, um, race. I'm actually not sure what time that, that.
High noon.
High noon. High noon. So we'll come out and watch, uh, rubber duckies use their little imaginary feet to swim.
Right. And the ducks are five bucks each, or 20 smackers for five quackers.
And then there, there's also corporate sponsorship for $100 for a big duck.
And the city's gonna get one. And also, they're having a mermaid contest, so I don't, I don't know how you go on Elena's site for, through TikTok and whatever, but, um, there's going to be some kind of a contest.
I hear that Annie dodged a bullet on that one.
No, she put me in that.
Oh, you're dressing up again?
No, I'm not dressing up. She's, she's my photo for 4th of July. Guaranteed not to win. Okay.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Jocelyn Francis, Assistant City Manager. Um, I'm proud to announce the installation of EpiCenter, uh, traveling ocean exhibition by acclaimed Laguna Beach sculptor Casey Parlette. Uh, it was installed on Thursday, October 9th, and it'll be here through the first week of January at Old Ben Park. Uh, huge kudos to Public Works, uh, for helping transport, um, EpiCenter from the barge to the yard and then to its final, or temporary location at Old Ben Park. Uh, standing at 11 feet tall and forged from stainless steel and bronze, EpiCenter invites visitors to step inside a spiraling journey through ocean life. Um, this collaboration was through the city, certainly, Casey and the MPA Collaborative Network. Uh, we have, uh, two, um, MPAs in Avalon, one at the Casino Dive Park and one at Lover's Cove, um, and we are so thankful for the work that the MPA Collaborative Network does. If you wanna learn more about the MPAs in the city or about EpiCenter and Casey's artwork, um, we've created a webpage, cityofavalon.gov/epicenter to learn more. Thank you. Um, we did have an art opening on, uh, Sunday for the exhibit, so thank you all who attended and learned a little bit more about, um, about the artwork, Casey, and our MPAs. Uh, a reminder, this Saturday, October 25th, from 8:00 a.m. to noon here at the City Hall campus, we've got our hazardous waste drop-off event, bulky item, e-waste, tires, appliances, uh, you name it. Um, again, that's Saturday, October 25th, from 8:00 a.m. to noon. Um, interior residential vehicle registration and public service vehicle registration are both opening up this Thursday, October 23rd, uh, so come by, see Carolyn, and she can help you out with your vehicle registrations. Um, and then this is, uh, more of a public service announcement. Code enforcement has seen a pretty big increase in the calls for service related to deers. Um, whether it's, uh, deers, um, being injured, uh, being stuck in fences, feeding of deers, this is just a reminder, it's illegal to feed wildlife in Avalon, and that includes deers. Um, so I just wanna make sure everybody is aware, certainly it's a fishing code violation, um, but we also have a municipal code that, uh, that prohibits feeding of wildlife, so just a reminder. Thank you.
Good evening, council. Bob Greenlaw, give you update on Five Corners. Um, prep for paving began on Monday with the grinding operation that you saw come swiftly into town and leave town pretty swiftly. Uh, paving of Avalon Canyon, um, was originally planned for tomorrow, but because of the barge, we have so much equipment on the barge, they bumped us a day. So it will be Thursday that we'll actually be paving on Avalon Canyon. So a full barge load of equipment and eight trucks of hot mix asphalt will be barged over very early in the morning. It gets picked up at the plant over in, uh, in the inland, um, at 3:00 o'clock in the morning, and then finds its way over here with carpet and tarps and, to keep it warm enough, uh, to still be able to use it, uh, when it comes over here. We'll start the paving on the easterly side, right up here against City Hall, um, but there will be, uh, one lane traffic, so, uh, school traffic, or you have to go up Avalon Canyon, you'll be on the other side of the road. Uh, we'll finish that paving on that side, we have to let it cool. Uh, try to get it to cool down about to 160 degrees, you know, when it's at the plant, it's 350, by the time it comes here, it's about 260 degrees. And, uh, so then we can put traffic on that side, so there'll be a little bit of slack time in between that, and, uh, and so during that time, City Hall main driveway's gonna be closed, like, from 8:00 to 11:00. So just giving you a warning, if you have to get into City Hall, you can park in the back, you can park up the street, walk in. Uh, we'll, um, give a heads-up to the Island Company for anybody that's in the field of dreams, get your stuff out of there, if you've gotta be out of there for the morning, and, uh, then traffic will be on that side, and then that, that reopens. During that time, Tremont itself is gonna be closed, and actually, Tremont's not gonna open till Friday, because, um, we have, uh, Fire Department's gonna occupy Tremont during that time, and then we'll also have those eight truckloads waiting, so we need that space there to be able to stage all that. Then we'll reopen Tremont, and it'll be in the condition that this road is for maybe six weeks, because once the grinder came over, it had to do that. So there'll be some, uh, cones in the middle of the road that you'll have to go around, but otherwise, you know, it's, it's pretty safe to, to travel, not skateboard, uh, you have to watch, watch yourself on that, so, um, so, uh, and then we're gonna start working the intersection. So when we start working the intersection, for the most part, Tremont, that leg of the road's gonna be closed to through traffic, just as you saw on Monday, to make more sense and to make it safe to be able to get traffic through, you're gonna have to find your way around, um, to Sumner, so that we can keep all the other, uh, intersections open. And so it's really kinda closing that off, so that we can have a flagger work your way through and keep you safely through, so you don't, nobody has to worry what's happening behind you, coming from all different directions, okay? That's why we're doing it. During non-work hours, we'll open it back up, okay? So that's where you'll see, so it'll open back up Friday here, uh, for Friday after we get done with the paving, uh, Thursday, and, uh, any questions?
No, but I believe Allied and Jordal and whatever involvement we all have as a city, it's going very, very well, and they're real, we're working their best, for sure.
Excuse me. Well, that's good to hear.
No, no, it's great.
Okay. Uh, if anybody has any questions, I'm out there, and, uh, come see me.
Can we just make sure to post about it on Wednesday, so, um, families are prepared, you know, maybe have some extra time to take the.
Yeah, and so we're gonna be changing, we had everything posted on, excuse me, social media, and so now we'll update that, and, uh, and we'll do some out, further outreach, so that everybody is aware of that. Uh, we try to get everybody where they need to go. We try not to delay.
We're always, like, on the last second and never prepared for traffic, so.
Yeah, um, yeah, and just hopefully, like, school, if you're going to school, you get slightly delayed, everybody understands, hey, we're going there.
Those last 10 minutes, it's always jam-packed.
I can tell you, lunchtime yesterday was crazy. I, it just, uh, traffic was coming from every direction, and we were trying to do two things at once out there, because the grinder had to get back on the barge, uh, and that's how difficult it really is to do that type of project on Avalon, 'cause hot mix, if we had our own plant, great, but it isn't, it has to come way over here, and any piece of equipment, very expensive rentals on that, and if it doesn't go back on time, it gets charged another day and another day. It's kinda like, if we get a big crane over here, it's three days charge for one day of work, because they charge you for the barge over, the day of work, and the barge back. You have to pay the full day of work for those. Yeah.
And Kelly?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Kelly Robuffo, Contract Planner. Uh, just wanted to remind everybody that tomorrow night is our regularly scheduled Planning Commission meeting, and it'll start here at 5:00 o'clock, uh, in the council chambers. We have five items on the agenda tomorrow. As I've mentioned earlier, uh, item number one will be the South Beach Restoration Project. Um, Bob Greenlaw will be our guest presenter to provide some, uh, information about the scope of the project for folks who might not already be, um, familiar with it. Uh, and then we have four transient rental license applications. So there'll be three in Hamilton Cove and one in the Flats. This will be the first transient rental license applications that have been heard by the Planning Commission since the updates to the regulations that were made, um, earlier in the spring, summer. Uh, so if anybody has any questions about kind of the updated regulations, how we're processing projects that were on kind of a waitlist during the moratorium, uh, please feel free to reach out to myself or Donna Romo at the planning counter, we'd be more than happy to answer people's questions about the project process moving forward. Um, we also tentatively, looking towards November, this Planning Commission meeting, we are intending to process another five applications for transient rentals, uh, and then we'll also tentatively have the 2026 annual growth policy on that meeting as well for recommendation to council. Any questions?
I think we're good.
Thank you.
City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor, council. Uh, just a few things, uh, last, or two weeks ago, I guess, I, with council, I had the opportunity to attend Cal City's annual conference over in Long Beach, um, number of great breakout sessions. AI seems to be the hot topic, or was the hot topic this year. We are, uh, looking at some options to implement a policy here at the city, uh, for the use of AI, just to make sure we govern it for our staff, employees, um, of how we're gonna handle that, so we will keep council apprised as we work through that. Um, also, uh, attended a, a very good session on, uh, implementation of development agreements. We, um, with some of the developments we anticipate coming up in the next couple of years, we'll be implementing, uh, or engaging in some development agreements, so, uh, some new, new tools that we can, we can use. And I know, I'm sure some of you will, will comment on your breakout sessions. I also wanna, I, last council meeting we had, we talked about the, the 35 or so guests that we had here on the Tuesday of Cal Cities. Um, I forgot to mention last time, but I do wanna recognize that tonight, that, uh, those 35 guests were brought over. Uh, BBK and Scott Campbell were responsible for making sure that their boat fare and Catalina Express was taken care of. Just wanna thank Scott while he's here and, and BBK for doing that. It was a great, great, uh, to have those folks over, and then all through the next couple of days over in Long Beach, and we'd run into them, and they, they really all have, just so many people raved about their visit here, so, uh, it was good to see. Um, in the next couple of weeks, we're gonna be scheduling a meeting with Island Company and other stakeholders, really getting ready for storm prep for this winter, making sure we're all on the same page, that the storm channels are cleared, everything is removed that has to be removed, so when the rains come, that we're in a position to be able to handle that. Just for council's information, upcoming meetings, December, we are looking at, uh, only having the one, one meeting in December, canceling the December 2nd meeting. Um, the main reason that follows, um, Thanksgiving week, which. the December 2nd meeting. The main reason that follows Thanksgiving week, which really compresses staff's ability to get staff reports and agenda out. So that meeting, the only meeting we'll have in December right now that we're looking at is on the December 16th, regular scheduled meeting, the second one. And then Eric and Ryan are here from Townsend Public Affairs. I know that, you know, it's been mentioned a couple of times, but I do just want to point out how involved they are and how successful we've been in our grants over the last several years. While Aliana gets a big, a large part of that credit, their work, both in the grant application process, going through that, and then after the grants are received, has been a huge help for us, and I just appreciate everything that they've done. And when we get into the agenda tonight, I'm going to point out, we have one correction on a misnumbering on the agenda regarding, you know, we go from number one to number three. Part of that was, there was an item that was removed from the agenda, but the numbering is inconsistent, so I'll address that as we go through it. Are there any questions? Thank you.
Attorney?
Yeah, just, people from Townsend will go over this in a little bit greater detail, but there's a new Brown Act. They've revised it substantially. It will be in two phases. There's first set of rules that come into effect in January, and those deals with noticing of meetings, how you can have meetings, and how we handle telecommunications during meetings. And so they've totally revised those rules. We'll be bringing a summary of those to the Council once we through analyzing them. And then the second phase occurs in July, and those deals with the requirement to have translation of the agendas, and as well as have translators ready for people who attend meetings. And so that will be a more noticeable change in the Brown Act, starting in January. And one of the things that we're doing is we're working with the city clerk in terms of understanding what technologies we can use. And then the second thing is looking at the legislation to see if this is an unfunded mandate, so that any cost that the city incurs is, are reimbursed by the state. So the state has a rule that if the state imposes mandates on cities, cities can file a cost bill with the state and get reimbursed for all the cost of compliance with these new requirements. And so we'll be looking at that. But that's just two phases. You'll notice it on the notice of agendas in January, and then July is going to be, we're going to be translating things into Spanish.
I'll go first, because it's short. We did attend Cal City's annual conference. The one session that really stood out was the session on short-term rentals. In the discussion, listening to what was said, questions that were asked, we're on the right track. We're doing really good with what we've come up with so far. So I feel really good about that. And then I'd also like to thank the Governor for signing the legislation that allows cities to actually go after TOT much easier than what has been in the past. And on a personal note, I would like to thank these three right here for patching me up after falling down the escalator. I appreciate it.
Glad you're okay.
You didn't thank me for giving a push down the escalator. That's a separate thing.
I forgot to see the tape.
That's right. Yeah. Okay, I can go next. I also went with everybody else to Cal Cities, and definitely agree with Michael. I think it was nice to see and even have some validation that we're on the right track. And even for the session, obviously, that stood out for me was on immigration policies and just seeing that we're actually ahead of the game, and we were since day one. So I'm very proud of us and for the support and all of the hard work from the city staff as well. So thank you, guys. Also, a little update on Youth and Government. We are started up and going. We will be meeting every Friday. We have 11 delegates. First meeting went great. Kids are excited, which pumped me up, you know, because sometimes government can be a little mundane, but they were excited. So next week, well, this Friday, we're meeting, and we're going to start working on what bill they would like to modify or change, because that's what they will be presenting in Sacramento in February. And on a personal, but still kind of city note, I attended the Franklin and Eleanor Roosevelt Awards on Sunday night. I was able to attend as an honoree, so I was, I got LA Democrat of the Year for our district, 69. Thank you, guys. That was received by Assemblymember Laurental and Senator Lina Gonzalez, so thank you very much. But man, what an experience, let me tell you guys. I was trying not to fangirl, but I was able to meet Congresswoman Maxine Waters. Let her know, obviously, Catalina. And little did I know, she actually used to bring her kids here when she was little, so she remembers the Flying Fish Tours. So that was really neat. But even met State Superintendent of Education Tony Thurman. Of course, Sheriff Robert Luna was there. I also really wanted to meet, and I did get the chance to meet the President of SEIU, David Huerta. I know he had a pretty rough run-in with ICE, and so we were able to talk on that topic, so that was really cool. So yeah, I just tried to soak up every second of it. I couldn't believe it was real.
Wow, that's great. Yeah, I went to the convention as well. The standout, I went to one that was about communication and transparency between government and the public. And one thing that one person said, who was a councilperson, she was like, you know, I just go through my everyday life, and I just, I am who I am, and I have my beliefs and stuff, and I speak the way that I speak, and I'm really surprised at how my words can impact people. Because when people come up to her in public and stuff like that. And that really hit me because of that one meeting when we had about vacation rentals, and this woman was just like, I don't trust you, I don't trust you. And it was like, I believe that we are all very transparent and all very passionate about our city. And so, you know, it just, it hurt me. But, but so, you know, it just, I found it very informative and very, so I think we're doing a great job, guys, and we need to just keep it up. So just trust us. What else? I went to the dedication of Epicenter. Oh my God, what a beautiful statue. If you have not been out there, and it was such a cool idea to talk to the sculptor, because when you look at it, it's just like, it looks kind of like a wave or something, you know, in kelp and all this kind of stuff. But he purposely constructed it that way. So if you've never been, like, I'm not a diver. I stay on the surface. So if you've never gone down below and been with the kelp and the fish and all that stuff, you're supposed to stand in the middle of it, stand in the, like, inside the circle and look up, and you get the feeling of what it would be like to be in the kelp and the fish and stuff. And it's really very cool. And I talked to him a little bit afterwards about some other collaborative things, maybe, that we can do with him and the city. And, you know, I think he's a very talented guy, and he's close by. So, yeah, that was pretty cool. And I thought I had one other thing, but I can't think of it. So that's it. I'm going on vacation. Bye.
Attending Cal Cities, the two biggest takeaways I had, one was on a session on the general plan, and the discussion that general plan execution, if you're doing the entire general plan, can be somewhere between the cost of $1 to $2 million now because of all of the different pieces of the plan, which was crazy. They said that the price has gone exorbitantly high with regard to the different documentation. So the interesting part of that was that the panel was very clear on if you have a general plan that is still relevant, things have not changed significantly. There can be ridiculously high amounts of cost saving, because you don't need to necessarily edit the general plan. The cover date does not imply that it expires on that date. So I think, in my mind, I was worried because I'm like, hey, guys, 2030 is just kind of right around the corner, and we need to start working on all this, because of how long it takes to do each section and public outreach and everything else. And that is not necessarily the case, which gave me a little bit of peace of mind. So hoping it gives everyone else a little bit of peace of mind as well. I do think we need to make it, as was recommended in that session, a more living plan. I think we're doing a lot of work from that plan that's coming to fruition, which I really want to thank city staff on. But we, I think, I don't know, I always think we can always do better. So the other interesting piece of the conference, I normally come away from this conference with a great deal of inspiration and feel extremely uplifted and feel like motivated. It's, you know, I think it's, this role, and for city staff, the role, I think, is definitely a marathon, not a sprint. And it's usually a helpful boost at the time when I most need it. It's after summer, you're exhausted, you've gone through, like, just getting through head-down season of get work done. And so it's like a refresher. And this year, I missed that a little bit. I didn't, there was one talk at the end with Aaron Brockovich that gave me a little bit of oomph, and it took a couple of days for it to sink in, but I didn't feel that sense of hopefulness that I feel like we've had in the other sessions that we've attended. There was a lot of uncertainty and a lot of concern about what's going to happen financially and with infrastructure and with a number of different parts of all the things that cities and states do. And so I don't know, the talk at the end with Aaron Brockovich, the whole point of it was to remember your stick-to-it-iveness, to dig in when you have to, to act with passion when you have to, to find the reason why you're doing something and remind yourself of that when you're doing it. And so I think that was the one piece that was really helpful at the end, because the rest of it didn't give me that sense of uplift. So there were a lot of sessions that were informative and helpful, and a couple that I think are actionable, including some stuff on AI that we saw as well. But it was, it was just a little different for me than usual, which was interesting. I do want to really credit city staff. One of the last sessions that we attended on Friday morning, they were talking about the requirement to have to switch to a .gov website and what that entails. And probably 75% of the cities in the room hadn't done it yet, and we're ahead of the curve on that, too. So, right, I know, it's a Jocelyn over there. Yes, ma'am. So I really want to give credit to our city staff for how small of a staff we have, for the amount of work that you guys all do. I want to use expletives, you're phenomenal. You guys are just, you're killing it. You're killing it for us, and I love it, and I appreciate it so much, and it makes a difference, and especially in a room where there's massive cities with hundreds of employees that aren't doing half of the work that you guys are doing. So please, when you're feeling like it's overwhelming and it's a lot, remember your stick-to-it-iveness. I'm really proud of you. We're really proud of you. It shows. It shows here, and it shows in bigger spaces than here. So keep it up. Yeah. I'm going to, I'm going to have a connectivity call tomorrow. I really hope at some point in the near future, we'll have some great news on that. And then I will be missing the next council meeting and the next Gateway Cities meeting. Mary might have forgotten. She's going to be covering the Gateway Cities meeting for the COG for me. So I appreciate you doing that. Thank you. And that's it.
Excellent. Okay. At the general session, there was this guy, Mir Bushan, who talked about creativity. And I think that what came out the best with me is like, we don't just look at, we shouldn't just look at numbers and statistics and whatever. We need to work creatively to, it's not all about money or whatever. We need to work creatively to come up with solutions. So one of the things he also said was to be silly. So the city manager said that I could go to, and I'm going to join David Hart, go to one of the staff meetings and sit by you, because I think you like to get silly, too. So if we can come up with a topic that needs to be discussed and kind of massaged with staff in a, in a productive but lighthearted way, that might be kind of fun. And I'm curious, I got the information on the January 2026 Sacramento Legislative Tour. Do you all go to that? Does Townsend do that? The 2026 Sacramento Legislative Tour?
That's Contract Cities.
Yeah.
That's the Contract Cities one, yeah.
Oh, Contract. So who goes? Do we send anybody to that?
You can go.
Okay. Well, if we could come up with things that we really want to push through and go through or whatever. Okay, so we have till January. Okay, I'm sorry. Thank you. That's all. Okay. Presentations. That would be Townsend.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, members of the Council. Eric O'Donnell, Townsend Public Affairs, joined here by my colleague, Ryan McCarthy. Thank you for having us. Good to see all of you again from a couple of weeks ago at Cal Cities. Great recaps. I second all of that. I wanted to start by saying that this is actually the first time I've been at this Council Chambers and not worn a tie, because the last time I was here, I got made fun of by you. So now I'm, I'm learning, and eventually, maybe we could even go down even more, but one step at a time. Thank you. So let's get started here in Sacramento. Where does this thing point? Not working here.
Hang on, Matt's gonna, Matt's gonna cue it up for you.
I'll just get, I'll get started, and we'll catch up then. So on August 18th, we got back from our summer recess in Sacramento and started a three-week blitz to the finish line. So September 12th is the end of the legislative session in Sacramento. We're on two-year terms in Sacramento, so everything that did not pass this year is technically still alive for this upcoming year. In total, there were 2,0397 bills introduced in Sacramento. That's a lot of bills. I think we all understand that. It's actually going to go down a little bit, because this is the first year where we have new bill introduction limits. They used to be 50 for assembly members per two years and 40 for senators per two years. Those got changed to be 35 across the board. So the first year was not that different, but I fully expect next year to be a lot fewer pieces of legislation introduced. Doesn't mean there'll be less work or anything like that. It's just more of a process for staff. Frankly, the staff is, having to do 2,400 bills is a lot of staff time up in Sacramento. Of those, 917 were passed, 794 chapered, 123 vetoed. So on the vetoed legislation, most of that was because the bills would have a cost to the state, an ongoing cost, that was not budgeted for. So it's a discretion of the Governor to figure out whether or not that's something they can absorb in the budgeting process, as you well understand, or if it's something that needs to wait until next year or subsequent years when the budget makes sense for that. The numbers were not inclusive of non-binding resolutions, so legislators can also introduce non-binding resolutions that don't do a whole lot of enforcement or impact, but it's a statement. So there are several hundred of those as well throughout this process that do take up time. I just wanted to make sure that was clear. They actually went to, till about 2, maybe 3:00 a.m. on Friday night, when they were supposed to adjourn, and then they weren't done. So they actually broke and reconvened the next morning around 9:00 or 10:00, and then actually disassembled, adjourned at 3:00 p.m. So they actually went over their time this year, which they can do through the rules, through certain rule waivers. But definitely not something you see to this extent every time. So the Governor had until October 13th to make his decisions on what he was going to sign or veto. The state budget is all, has been a very interesting place to work in the last couple of years here in California. We seem to have these very large swings in our budget, based on our tax structure and how we're set up, based on, basically, if Silicon Valley does well, we do well as a state budget. So essentially, we had $100 billion surplus, if you remember, probably four years ago now. That just kept going down and down and down, and now we're at a $12 billion deficit. That's where we ended. Every budget has to be balanced, though, so they did pass a series of, I call clever accounting practices to, you know, borrow from one account, dip into our reserves quite a bit, actually, reductions across the board. So they got down to that, to that even budget, but it leaves about $11.2 billion left in our rainy day fund, which is still quite sizable. So if you remember, we passed a proposition 10 years ago or so that required a rainy day fund, and we've been building that ever since. And we definitely tapped it this year pretty aggressively, but we have a lot left. So it's, it's good news for our long-term outlook. The last-minute trailer bills and Budget Bill Juniors, what that really means is any bill that adjusts the budget after the budget is passed, is called a trailer bill. You're not supposed to do policy work in those. You're supposed to only do financial appropriations work. However, policy work does sneak in there. It is definitely a easier process, less transparent, less steps. So they do sneak in policies when they need to. There was a lot of policy this year done that way, which is not always the best, but it is certainly something to be wary of and to be engaged on. I'll talk about it on the next slide, but a lot of that policy in like the CEQA mitigation, CEQA exemptions, was done through this process without a ton of public input. Prop 4, climate bond, David spoke a little bit about it, but there, if you remember back in November, $10 billion climate bond was passed by the voters. That has to get appropriated through the budget process every year. It doesn't just hit the streets. So this year is 3.3 billion of that, and so 6.7 will be for future years. Of that 3.3, it does have all of the money for the parks and outdoor recreation front-loaded for this next one, which is the money that David was just talking about, that we're working on. We actually, just earlier before this meeting, we met, and we looked at our map of Avalon and saw some places that they were in their system. They think State Parks thinks is a park. They think State Parks thinks is a park here on the island, but we know that it's not a park, it's sidewalk or it's, you know, a building that's not accessible, et cetera, et cetera. So we've already reached out to the LA Parks Division to figure out how we can change those maps to increase your scoring when the time comes because it's, they're not part, or South Beach is an example, they're picking up all of South Beach as a park where half of it's not there anymore, right? So those are kind of lines that are going to help our, our scoring once we get there. Safe drinking water, flood control, wildfire, those are some other categories that were front-loaded in the Climate Bond. Concerns remain on the budget. You know, we, we do multi-year deficits now with Governor Newsom. Governor Brown was a lot different in the way he budgeted, but Governor Newsom likes to do multi-year budgets, multi-year deficits. So it's, it's a moving target to figure out how much we're down, but month to month, we're actually doing pretty well on our tax incomes right now and our personal income tax receipts. But all the uncertainty in DC is really making that very difficult to budget for. So we fully expect to lose probably tens of billions of dollars coming out of DC over the next several years, a lot of that in the healthcare space. So it's going to be, it's going to remain a challenge for legislators in Sacramento to budget appropriately. A couple of significant subjects this year that we were engaged in, I'm going to try to go through these as fast as possible, but there was a lot to do. But the Cap'n Trade Program reauthorized and rebranded to the Cap'n Invest Program. Big picture, this is a program where we tax polluters in our state, if they go over a certain level, we take that money, it's about $4 billion per year, and then we redistribute it for programs across the straight, that, across the state that reduce greenhouse gas emissions. So it is a very lucrative program, especially with a bad budget year. You can, you know, you can be guessing that the legislature is looking at that money, that's very consistent money, and saying, ooh, you know, where can, where can I pull some of this? So when that was reauthorized, they changed a lot of those parameters to be away from continuous appropriations to certain programs in more hard-dollar amounts, which means every year now they can come back and tweak it if they want to. Which is good in terms of chances of success for getting something we care about, but definitely a major change from what it was before, and so that's reauthorized until 2045 now. CEQA implementation, so like as I mentioned, there was a lot of CEQA exemptions this year, was the year of CEQA exemptions in a lot of ways, mostly on housing, but also on wildfire and fuel mod. So a lot of fuel mods, CEQA exemptions to make it easier for folks in local communities that are fire-prone to remove some dead foliage or trees that are causing issues, but also infill, infill housing pretty much across the board got exempted from CEQA. So anything under, I believe it's five acres, a 20-unit is exempt from CEQA for the most part. Immigration response was a big deal this year in the legislature, spent a lot of time, didn't engage a whole lot on it, but I still wanted to mention it because I know it's very important to the community and everyone, everyone else. There were several bills, a couple of them, I'll just go over, would, one of them would require notification to parents when immigration officials are on school campuses. That was a big issue you saw at the very beginning of the enforcement issues we're having. Another one requires agencies, local agencies, to have policies on requiring visible identification of officers. Another one had a prevented face coverings in certain scenarios for certain types of local officials. So those are the kind of the outskirts that the state is trying to operate in. Obviously, it's a federal agency, federal jurisdiction, it's very complicated, but the state definitely did not shy away from making this one of their priorities this year. Congressional redistricting, that's basically Prop 50. So I mean, we've, we probably all know where, what that is and when that is. I believe it's November 7th is the special election for Prop 50. That started in the state legislature, it was a series of three bills this year that were pushed through very fast that allowed us to have a special election, put it on the ballot, and defined what it is. And so that is a redistricting that is theoretically going to net five extra Democratic-favored congressional seats in terms of, in the 2026 election. I want a big caveat to say that, that doesn't, there still will be an election, and these people still have to win an election, and you know, that can go either way, but they're definitely trying to pack certain districts with Democratic registration advantage to counteract what Texas did in their very similar process. The difference is Texas doesn't have to go to their voters when they do something like this, but California does. So if California does not pass this, Texas has already passed it. So in 2026, they're expected to pick the opposite, five Republican-favored districts. So that's the, the discussion right now on Prop 50. New Senate leadership. So we, the Senate caucus officially elected Senator Monique Lamon as the next Senate Pro Tem in the, in the state senate. That's a big deal. The Pro Tem is a, is a very powerful person, really sets the agenda. Interesting to me, but they set the committee chairs of each committee from, on the senate, which can have a real impact on policy for the next several years. The current Pro Tem is, is terming out in 2026, might run for Congress, I don't know. So this is an important time to switch over. November is when they'll do their switch. Senator Lena Gonzalez, our senator here, was, I would say, in the final running for this position, would have been pretty cool for us to have that kind of influence and power in Sacramento, but the way the winds blew at the end, not, not in her favor. And Senator Lamon is, is now the, the pending Pro Tem. Couple pieces of legislation, council member already talked about, SB 346, a little bit on TOT, this was a big win for cities. CalCity sponsored it, but essentially it gave cities the ability to request, to demand certain information from Airbnb, VRBO, et cetera. Most, you know, most of what I have heard of our cities is it's not necessarily the tax remittance, they were pretty comfortable, they were getting the money, it was location, right? Code enforcement wanted to know where these were, and it was very difficult to find where they were in certain cities. And so this bill does require them to give you accessory parcel numbers and the URL associated with the listing. So those are very important pieces of information when it comes to enforcement of existing ordinances for short-term rentals. So that'll go into effect in January. SB 79 was probably the most talked about local government bill this year. I'm, I will say that it's, while it was the most talked about, it should not affect the city or the island at all, and the main reason is because this is a bill that, that allows through ministerial approval, up to 65-foot height apartment complexes, if you will, around high-quality transit, regardless of what the zoning is at the, at that location. But the key is high-quality transit. It has to be within a half-mile radius of high-quality transit. Through the definitions of the bill, none of that applies to the city. It's usually rapid bus service in certain areas or rail, commuter rail, like BART, think of San Francisco or the metro in LA. SB 707, that Mr. Campbell talked about briefly. I personally worked on this a lot this year with a lot of my smaller cities in mind about the impacts that it would make, but essentially this is the biggest Brown Act modernization bill that we've had in a very long time. But it's going to make a lot of changes to most cities in California. It has some size and county kind of requirements, but we do apply for it, or do, it does apply to us, I should say. But the main differences, I would say, are it requires a two-way communication between the council and the public for all council meetings starting in July. So every council meeting, I know it's live streamed now, but there'll have to be an opportunity, kind of like COVID, if you remember what we did during COVID with public comments being on Zoom or any other platform, it would require that at every meeting. Not every committee meeting or not every, no planning commission, just city council. So just the every other Tuesday. And then the second part that'll be costly on the staff side is the agenda translation. So that's into every language spoken by the public, more than 20% of the public who also speak English less than well. So it's a, it's a weird American Community Survey statistic. I agree with, with Scott that it's probably, it's going to be Spanish here, and then it's up to three languages. So I doubt you would have a second language to go with that other than English, but some communities out there will have to do it three times for three different languages. That's just the, that's not the packet, just the agenda itself, so it does help on the staff time a little bit. But we were pretty successful in, you know, that six-month delay implementation was something that we brought up very early to the committee, especially for our small cities that have limited staff. That's very hard to turn around a bill like this, January 1 of next year. I mean, we're, it's, you know, that's October 21st. I mean, that's very difficult with the holidays and everything else. So six months means the world to staff when it comes to just understanding what the bill does and how to implement it, so we're proud of that. As well as liability protections for any of that agenda translation, if there's a mistake, you're not on the hook for it, if it was honest. And any sort of disruption in connectivity, I know we have Wi-Fi issues here on the island and connectivity issues, so if there is a disruption, there's a process in there that you can rectify it and, and no harm, no foul. So we're excited, we're excited about the changes we were able to get. It is going to be a challenging bill for sure, there's no doubt, but you know, we were, we were definitely working on this early and often up in Sacramento for you. AB 470 is a two-year bill, it failed, but it'll be back next year, but this is a bill I've talked to some of you about last time I was out on the island, but this is a bill that would allow telecommunications companies to apply to stop being a carrier of last resort for telephone service. It's a, it's a, I'll call it a niche bill that has, that has applicability in narrow areas of the state, but some member, Lowenthal, Senator Gonzalez, were pretty passionate about excluding Catalina Island from that bill, just to make sure that these carriers cannot apply to abandon Catalina Island from the telephone service, especially as we're talking about broadband and what that means and, you know, if investments in the island, et cetera. So it's a two-year bill, lots, lots will come out, it will, it will involve, but so far a, a good start. And shows that your legislators are paying attention, frankly. Okay, moving on to DC. It's, it's closed right now. There's, it's day 21 of a shutdown. This is longer probably than we expected. There is no end in sight, I will say right now. What, what, how does it affect you? It affects everyone in a different way, but I will say that each agency is, is pretty skeleton-staffed right now, only the essentials, a lot of them are even, you know, doing mass layoffs in a, in a way right now with RIFs. There is no discretionary funding coming out during it or most likely after it, although you, if you do have a previous grant award, it's very likely you'll still get that money, it's just a matter of process and time at this point. It's going to take a long time. Couple contexts, context here is, you know, we've already saw the administration withhold some transportation funding from New York regarding, you know, trying to counteract maybe pressure some of those New York senators and congressmen from, who are in the Democratic Party to negotiate. Other threats have been made, but have not been followed through yet. And just some context, the last couple shutdowns have only been 16 days and 21 days respectively. The 26, 2018 one obviously was with President Trump in his first term, so no end in sight, but I will say that President Trump did meet with Republican appropriators today at the White House. We thought that might be a semblance of some sort of deal. Looks like reports are saying that it was a, a strategy meeting, but also a thank you to them for holding the line with him and not gaving on, on the, on the shutdown so far. And then federal community project funding is something we always talk about, this is the new fancy word for federal earmarks. This is the process we were able to secure some funding for the mall through Congressman Garcia a couple of years ago. Last year, they didn't do earmarks at all. This year, the process opened, we submitted again. Congressman Garcia, you know, has several other places in his district that he has to put money, can't always do the same places, there's a lot of parameters around where that can go. But we were picked by Senator Padilla for a project, but the committee didn't, did not include it in their bill, but I'm excited that Senator Padilla was engaged enough to want to do our workforce housing project, and that there's opportunities in the future potentially to partner with that. So just put it up here to know that we, that we applied for it, and that process will open again in March for next time, and we will be all over it again, working with city staff to identify priority projects. And then I'm going to pass over to Ryan really quick for the next couple of slides to talk about some, some grant applications.
I was curious, how's that high-speed rail going through California?
Well, that's actually a good question. So on high-speed rail is one of the, the Cap'n Trade, Cap'n Invest Program is actually one of the biggest funding sources for, for high-speed rail. And so there was, there was no negotiation on whether or not we were going to continue to fund that, we were, we were going to fund that in Sacramento. So a lot of that money from Cap'n Trade immediately off the top goes to high-speed rail. I think it's about a billion dollars of that 4 billion, goes straight to it. They need a lot more than that.
They're far behind and way over budget.
Yeah, and I will say that some, a lot of the complaints about Cap'n Trade going to high-speed rail is that it's supposed to be for greenhouse gas reduction, right? And for 10 years, they've been getting money from this program, and there hasn't, you know, nothing's run yet. So someone's asking a question lately of, when, when do these greenhouse gas emissions have to start accumulating? Because so far, we're 10 years in without any, we, maybe we should put the money somewhere else, but that doesn't seem to be what Sacramento wants to do.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Ryan McCarthy with Townsend Public Affairs, here to talk quickly about some grants that we've submitted for the city in the past year. The first one is the Division of Boating and Waterways Shoreline Erosion Control and Public Beach Restoration. These used to be two separate programs, but thankfully have since been bundled into one this year by DBW. This is an interesting application because the funding is actually dependent on it being allocated into the state budget process. So we actually applied for this grant in fiscal, this grant that we applied for is in fiscal year 2026 and 2027, and it's dependent on funding being allocated to the program in the state budget next year, something we've been continuing to advocate for. We applied for the surrendered and abandoned vessel exchange program in April, which was unfortunately not selected. And in April, we also helped submit the boating safety and enforcement equipment grant. Big props to Aliana who did all of the heavy lifting on this one. We just helped touch up a few things and help with a finicky grants portal. Those are always fun. As has been mentioned several times already, we are currently working with city staff, Aliana and Kevin, on the LA County RPUSD grant application for the South Beach Restoration Project. This program is funded by Measure A Funding, which was, as you, I'm sure, remember, a half-cent sales tax passed in the November 24 ballot for homelessness and parks funding, which has now come down through this program, which is open until October 30th, so we have about one week left to get this submitted. We've been having weekly calls with Kevin and Aliana to make sure that we're on track on this one, and we are, so should be in well before the deadline. Yeah, that's it for us, and Eric and I are happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
No, but I really wanted to say thank you because it makes a world of a difference to have like our reps and you guys be involved in the community, because when these things come up, you understand that it is different and, you know, you can advocate for us in that way. So thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oral communications. This is an opportunity for people to speak on items that are not on the agenda. You are limited to two minutes and no action will be taken.
Just real quick, I know it was a very different kind of presentation that I'm now going to do. So just following up on a couple of things I heard earlier during, when everybody was talking, Vote by Mailbox, please come and use it, it's right outside the library. Register recorder is coming to empty it every week, and it'll be locked and sealed right at 8 on Election Day. Nice and safe, everything is really good. I also check my, my book return bin and I throw any ballots into the Vote by Mailbox too. Actually, I don't, I give it to the police, which is actually what I'm supposed to do. You mentioned, Mr. Hart mentioned state parks. I just want to remind everybody that the library actually checks out passes, so you can have free admission to the state parks, not the national parks, the state parks. So you can't go to Yosemite, but you can go to Bodie, which is that little Wild West town on the side of Yosemite, then you can sneak in through the back. Not that I'm telling you to do anything like that. Coming up this Saturday, we'll be doing Smarty Pants Storytime, our weekly story time. I am going to do a mermaid theme. I will not be a mermaid, but if a mermaid wants to stop by, that's just fine, I won't mind at all. But it will, I've got some mermaid books, I'm going to come up with some kind of a mermaid craft, it'll be kind of nice. Tomorrow, come to our history talk with Chuck Liddell and Sandy Putnam. They're going to be talking about the biggest and best things about Catalina. I don't quite know what that's going to be. That could be this very city council, I don't know. And then on Thursday, October 23rd, I have a magician, Zany Zoe, she's coming, please bring your kids. That's going to be a lovely event, that's paid for by our friends at the library. Thank you very much indeed. On Halloween, when you do your trick-or-treating, come on down to the library, say trick-or-treat, I'll give you a book. I got a book. I got like a big tray of books, so much better than candy. Coming up in early November, the Found Object Juggling Show, I'm going to have a juggler, like he juggles wheelbarrows. I don't think he's going to juggle a wheelbarrow, which I don't think he can get on the boat, but he's going to juggle something amazing. I had him for the opening day in 2019, so I remember him as being really incredible. So I think that, I'm not going to bore everybody. Thank you very much for letting me talk, and come to your library. Come to your library.
Thank you. There's nobody else consent calendar, please.
Item number one, warrants approval of the dispersments for September 29th, 2025 through October 10th, 2025, totaling $690,000, 400, $690,412.80. And then item three on the agenda, but should be item two. This was the misnumber. Adopt an ordinance amending Chapter 9-5, Article 5, low moderate-income housing, and[1761.01] Chapter 9-5, Article 5, low moderate income housing, and Article 6, accessory dwelling units of Title IX of the Avalon Municipal Code implementing housing programs 14 and 15 as set forth in the Sixth Cycle General Plan Housing Element and Adoption of Exemption findings under the California Environmental Quality Act.
I'll move to approve items one and two on consent.
Okay.
All eyes?
Okay.
Under general business, item four, Fire Department Mobile Incident Command Vehicle Replacement. Chief, I don't know if you have anything additional to add to this, but this is a request to purchase a vehicle that is substantially funded by grant funding.
Good evening, Council. This is part one of our new command vehicle. Our last one was donated in 2004 from Don Kenaby. This one is mostly highly funded, 50, over $59,000 of the 60-something is grant-funded out of Area F, out of Long Beach, for a new emergency operations center. So, went with the bigger vehicle, so we're able to have everything in it. So, if something happened to the station, or there's an incident, this thing's going to go anywhere. It's going to have everything from easy-ups to lights to batteries to screens to monitor, all our papers, something we could set up out in the field and run for hours. So, this is part one. I'll come back in around November, December with the second part.
Questions or comments?
I make a motion per the city's procurement policy authorize the city manager or his designee to execute an agreement with Watson Fleet Group for the purchase of a 2026 Chevrolet Silverado 2500 HD four-wheel-drive crew cab with 159-inch customs, 6.9-foot box by cooperative purchasing procedures. amend the fiscal year 2526 budget allocating $65,000 to fund 10245-6871 in CPI project number 234501.
Second.
Second.
All eyes?
Item five, change order number two for cultural resources consultation agreement with Montrose Environmental Services. Mr. Greenlaw.
Okay. So, this item authorizes another $50,000 for the budget for the cultural resource monitoring on the Five Corners project. So, we anticipate the scope of the cultural resource monitoring work is winding down. We hope that and anticipate that it won't be $50,000, but we're setting that up just so that we don't have to come back before December. What we're, still have excavation within the intersection, but most of the area that we did find the cultural resources was behind the rock wall and all along Tremont. It was a secondary placement that came from some other location within town, most likely the Metropole Hotel when we had the fire, and then they needed to find some space for some material that was convenient to fill a hole. And so, that's what happens when you take a sensitive site and move it to somewhere else. And so, that's winding down. So, we have the, again, the intersection to further excavate. We don't anticipate that being as sensitive as was behind the wall, but we have a rather large stockpile of sensitive material that we've made the decision instead of, we've sampled it. We know basically what percentage is there of sensitive material, and we're working with Native American representatives to get that repatriated, that material, instead of keep on sorting through the site and finding all the artifacts. So, whatever the stockpile is, we need to have that much volume of a hole to go put it in and then go through the repatriation process. So, that's why the $50,000 number. Okay? That's our main effort. Any other questions on that?
Move to authorize the city manager to execute change order number two for the professional services agreement with Montrose Environmental Solutions, Inc., to continue to provide cultural resource consulting for the Five Corner Site Improvement Project for an additional sum of $50,000 and a new total contract sum of $216,128.
Second.
All eyes?
Item number six is discussion of options for city council in considering tenant protection and rent control measures. Mr. Campbell.
Yeah, this is an item we've had before you several times, and I want to just go over what this is. This is a consideration for you to provide direction to staff as to whether you want to enact any tenant protections greater than what are allowed in state law. So, what state law currently provides is that the maximum that a landlord may increase a rent for an apartment, and really, these are only apartments, is 5% a year plus the amount of inflation, but a maximum 10. So, that's what the law is right now. 5% plus inflation, maximum 10. That's the highest that a landlord can raise rents. Cities are allowed, under the state legislation, to adopt stricter rent control. Examples are 3%, 4%, 5%. They are in the staff report. Any rent control that you enact would only apply to buildings that were constructed prior to 1995. Given your housing stock, it's most of the apartments. You've got very, very few apartment complexes that have been constructed recently. So, essentially, this would apply to those apartment complexes. If you were to put on rent control, you would need to create some mechanism for landlords to ask for an excuse or a relief from that. Typically, that's done on rent control board, where it would be an appointed body, but the city council would appoint it, or a person that would hear the landlord please for an exemption from that rent control, and that's a public hearing, and there's an adjudication there. Other things that you can do or increase, increase the requirement for relocation benefits. Many, right now, the state law really says it's one month. Some cities allow in case where landlords reap or relocate tenants because they want to tear down the property and maybe build the house, or put their own family in there. The state law requires one month. Some cities require three months. So, again, this is all a policy issue. All, you know, there's many different policies that are our states. The main thing is, you don't have any rent control right now in Avalon, so state control governs. And so, what we're asking for is to give us direction. We would then come back with a draft ordinance for your consideration based upon your direction. If you want to do this, again, this is purely discretionary. You do not need to have to do this. There was a statewide proposition last year that would have allowed rent control to be applied to homes, condominiums, and any structure built regardless of the year. That was defeated by the Vogues. So, you're stuck under state laws that existed since 95.
And on that 1995 date, the number of units, is it asking us the number of units, like a larger thing? It's not just, like, two apartments or three apartments? Does it have to be, like, 15 or 20 or 30?
I don't think so. I think it can go, I think it's in a definition of apartments. But we can look at that, because I know that many apartments, at least on, over town, are four, four to six, and that does apply to them. I used to live in an apartment that had four apartments and rent control applied, the LA rent control applied to that.
And so, the relocation, that's limited to the same places? It's not overarching? It's not for?
You can make that broader.
Oh, we can. So, that's not restricted?
Right.
Oh, okay. Because, yeah, I think, I think that would be a good thing, because, you know, when people have lived in the same place for a long time, and then the owner wants to sell, and they get kicked out, and, you know, there's just nowhere to go. So, I think if we increase that to maybe two months for relocation or something, you know, just because people will probably have to spend some money while they're trying to find a permanent place to go.
And some of this is even do a move, helping to move their stuff, not just the?
Oh, true, yeah. Yeah. But I mean, various other reasons why people get bounced at no fault. That falls under the no fault.
Do you think we're kind of in agreement that we should look at some relocation amount? Or months or something?
Oh, like, the two months.
Okay. Can I consent this on that? So, okay, and the remodel cannot be reasonably accomplished in a safe manner. So, let's say they have to vacate for 30 days. Then they come back. Now, assuming some of the, because I think the tenant can get a list in some of these of what all needs to be done. And if it was that, if very substandard housing, I mean, you know, the landlord would be very delicate. After that, let's say they have to put $6,000 or $7,000 or $8,000, can they turn around now and increase that person's rent because they're finally doing improvements that should have been done before?
They would, they would ask for that. They would ask for that, and that would be something that the rent control board would, or whatever entity would consider. So, they are allowed, because part of the thing is, if you have substandard housing, we want to encourage people to upgrade the housing. And then, the question is, should the cost be borne by the landlord, or can they come to the board and say, part of this cost should be borne by the tenant because they're actually benefiting from that?
So, could, excuse me, could we, as council, set that amount, or would it have to be the rent control?
That's going to be, because it's going to be on fact by, it's going to be on a property-by-property application of the facts as to what the remodel is, how large it is, what the cost is. So...
We can't establish, like, a percentage, no more than this amount of a percentage, but it would just have to be on a case-by-case?
I'm not aware that any city's done that, but we could look into that. That would, I think West Hollywood is the most aggressive, and they haven't done that.
Pretty aggressive.
So, they could then, oh, but, okay, but they can't increase the rent but once a year. So...
Correct.
If my rent is raised January 1, and they do $10,000 worth of remodel in June, they shouldn't be able to charge me for that.
It's only once a year you can go.
Right. So, okay. So, that's, okay.
I like the City of Los Angeles's ordinance with regard to prohibiting landlords from retaliatory responses. I think if we can look at that and see if we can add that in, please. So, basically, for those in the public, it prohibits landlords from engaging in abusive or harassing behavior towards tenants, including removing housing services provided in the lease, threatening to disclose a tenant's citizenship status, withholding repairs, or refusing to accept rent payment or other bad-faith behavior. It provides a private right of action for tenants to enforce violations against their landlords and mandatory damages.
Yeah. I like that.
And then, all these additional, there are laws, additional tenant protections would be placed in this?
Well, those exist anyway, understandably.
But we would have them so they're visible with our ordinance.
You could do that if you want to. Yes.
I think they need it now. There's good stuff in that.
So, now, we haven't, we haven't talked about changing the 5%, 10% max. If we did, would we have to have the rent registry? Would the landlord have to register? If we adopted anything, will we have to have the landlord rent registry?
You can create that as a requirement under the ordinance to be able to enforce this, because you're going to have to have one way that the landlords are going to be able to report to the city what the increases are, so that you can monitor it and make certain that the landlord is complying with your ordinance. So, we can do that. You can create that, because that's going to be how you monitor the rents being raised and set.
Other than word of mouth?
Other than word of mouth. There has to be a way that, yeah.
Okay. But we could set our own fee for the rent registry, or is that determined by LA County?
Fee would have to be on the actual cost, the cost of the city doing the work for that.
So, Mac would come up with that?
Mac would come up. With any fee that you charge is based upon the cost to the city in enforcing any of these provisions.
And let me ask staff and the city manager, do you find, and planning or whoever, do you find that that is really cumbersome and maybe not worth our while? Or do you have an opinion?
My opinion would be, it's going to be cumbersome, because we know, you know, what we're going through with, you know, tracking short-term rentals, and we have a better mechanism to do that with host compliance as compared to tracking rental units. I mean, it's going to take, it's obviously going to take some work, and I believe, I'm sure there's more rental units than what we're dealing with for short-term rentals. So... What many cities have done is, again, it's up to the tenant to, you know, bring, you know, and at least bring it to the city's attention, then that would be a code enforcement action. Now, some tenants obviously are reluctant to come forward and to tell on their landlord for fear of retaliation and stuff. So, the, you know, the rental registration requires then the landlord to do that, so that we're not putting the onus on the tenant.
What do you think about that? Did your mind go?
I'm worried a little bit about, I think we talked about this before, there have been a couple of landlords who have automatically now increased the rent by the full 10%. Worried that there will be a kind of limit on the percentage that will be enforced moving forward, which they'd never, either had never done rent increases previously, or were very intermittent with their rent increases. It wasn't an annual thing. It's become an annual thing.
So, they'll go, oh, yeah, I better grab my 10%.
Right. Exactly. I better grab my money while I can. So, I am concerned a little bit about the cost of registration being an added disincentive to provide rental properties, which we know we need. I'm worried about the extra work for City Hall. I do think, I don't know, I was trying to think of what the most common CPI has been recently. It feels like it's hovering around 3%, but I don't know what the heck that's going to look like this year. So, I don't know if something like 8% is kind of in the middle, and both provides a little bit of relief for tenants and a little bit of coverage for landlords. We've received letters from people who primarily are landlords for multiple units or unit buildings that didn't want to have any kind of changes to anything. I didn't receive anything, I don't think, from people who were wanting protections. We've heard it from people that it's too costly to live here. So, I'm not, I don't know. I don't know if we start by doing just maybe the tenant protection ordinance and the moving requirement, and then see how those adjust, and then go from there, or if we look at percentages, too.
Definitely, one of the things that I think we see a lot is the listings. When they're looking for new tenants, and they spike their rent up to an enormous amount. So, would the percentage help with that?
No. Under the law, yeah, once a, with very, very small exceptions, that once a unit becomes vacant, the landlord is allowed, under state law, to set the rent at the market level, whatever that, whatever, and that's basically whatever the landlord can get for that.
So, yeah. So, who establishes the market?
The landlord does. Who's willing to pay? If someone's willing to pay, that's the market.
Right.
That sucks.
Yeah.
There's no, there's no option for that? There's no vacancy control?
No. None of that. There's very, very limited for, like, someone who's disabled and coming in, very, very tiny, it's kind of like the eye-of-the-needle exceptions in state law. But generally, there is not the ability to limit, when a unit is vacant, to limit the market from being, which is why in Santa Monica, you've got people that have lived there for 40 or 50 years, because when they come out, boom, it goes way up.
Right. So, there's absolutely no legal way we could say on turnover, move-in, move-out turnover, you can't...
Max you can charge per square foot is?
What?
Like, the max you could charge per square foot is?
Or just say, you know, you can't raise it more than 50% of what the last person paid. There's no legal way?
No.
All right. Yay.
Well, do you want to act like we want to have a percentage? Because then, because the community's going to come out now that we're talking about this. I think there'll be more dialogue. But do we want to do a tentative? Because I think we're going to look at something like that. What we, because I think we're, we're gonna look at something like that, so it's just what that will be.
Percentage of a raised rent increase? Oh, like, like Lisa suggested, five to eight, five minimum, eight max?
What do you think, Michael?
I don't have an opinion.
And it's, again, this isn't gonna affect everyone in town. This, this, if we do that, that, the rent increase, you know, five and, and eight, it wouldn't affect everyone in town, right? Just the people in the apartments?
It's just apartments that are older than nineteen ninety-five, and that's most of your apartment.
Exactly. So, everybody else that's renting from a, you know, a single-family home or something like that.
Doesn't apply.
But, but the five percent and the ten percent max, the state applies to them, correct?
No.
No?
No.
No.
Oh.
That's, that's what that proposition tried to do. The proposition tried to make all units apartment units. In terms of rent control, that did not pass.
Right, right, oh, I got that, but, oh, wow, I just thought that the homes would, so they could conceive, they're just whatever the heck they want to raise it to?
Whatever the market will pay.
See, I'm, I'm more in line with Lisa and a renters' protection and the other part that you were talking about, because this is only gonna apply to apartments.
Right, right.
So, I, if, if it was helping.
Everyone.
Everyone, but protections for renters, I think, are very important, so.
Right, but so, we can't legally tackle that, though?
Well, we can ta, we can do the ordinance, we can do the, the moving assistance.
Right.
But, yeah, the, I mean, the, you know, we can look at the numbers of how many there are, but it's not, it's, it may help some, it will not help all, and it may lead to drama for some.
Right, because when I first started this, I was really hoping that that would pass, and it would be beneficial for the whole town, but then I was very crestfallen when it did not pass. And so, yeah, and it does feel weird to put some protections in place for certain people, and other people can't benefit from it. And so, I don't like that idea at all.
Well, we can do this, because LA did it for all rental units, not just, it can be all, right? That doesn't have to apply, does the same break in ninety-five apply?
That's, the, the, those apply to the percentage of increase. So, we can look at, there are things that you can apply.
No, we're just talking about the City of Los Angeles.
The ordinance that protects them for, for abusive or harassment behavior, that's all rental units. Yeah.
That's why, that, to me, that's more helpful to our community.
Absolutely.
It's the rent control issue that's just limited to your.
Right. So, if we enact stuff like this, then do we have to have the committee?
No, you don't have, you only have to have the committee.
If you have rent.
If you're, if you're doing rent.
Okay, and then I have another question. Do we have someone at the city, say, they are living in an apartment, and their landlord raises their rent beyond the allowable ten percent? Or if, because of the CPI, it's only supposed to be, you know, seven percent that year? Is there someone that someone can call and say, "Look, I think my landlord's ripping me off"? Do we have anyone in place?
Yeah, I mean, it would come through the building department, and we would provide that information, and that, we'd be able to answer anybody's questions on that, yes.
Okay, cool, because I have, I have heard a lot of those kind of complaints, and people were actually, actually scared to report it, because they're afraid they're gonna get kicked out. And number two, they didn't know who to call. So, if that's happening to anyone out there, call the city, the building department, you know, make a complaint.
That's why I want this in first.
Yeah, and that's why we want this, yeah, this LA, yeah, this no harassment thing. Because people, there, there are some, I live in a shining example of how my rent has increased with absolutely no improvements, and I've lived there for eighteen years. So, you know, I just want, I want people to be able to voice their concern about their living condition without fear of losing their, their residence.
And so, a question on that, like, reaching out to the city for help. So, is there any protections that we could do for folks that are getting a thirty, sixty-day eviction, but either have financial hardship or are low housing stock? Is there any protect, or anything we can do to help them? Or do they have to report it?
Well, in other words, if people are being evicted because they cannot pay their rent.
Or, I don't know the exact situation, but they need to move out within thirty days, but there's nowhere to go. Is there any rent, renter protection?
Uh, we could, uh, so if, well, it depends on why they're being, if they're being evicted for breaching the lease, which is failure to pay rent, poor, you know, drug use, stuff like that. You know, they're, the state law does not provide any protections. It's for the, it's for the no-fault evictions, where they wanna make improvements, they wanna take the property off the market. There, it's one, it's one month, but we can, obviously, the council's at least indicated a minimum of two months, and that was something that the landlord would have to pay for. Again, you tell us what you want, we're gonna, this is, we're in a cafeteria now. Cafeteria of Rent and of Tenant Protections. And you put what you want on the tray, and we'll bring it back in the form of an ordinance.
Okay, so, um, they have to give me, let's say, their two months relocation, but I have to relocate back to the mainland because I can't find any housing here. Could we have an amount for relocation off island? Because it's not cheap to get all crap off the island, all of the furnishings.
You could probably put that in. That's, because you are, we, we have to make findings that Avalon is a unique entity, but we could, we could put that in there. We just need to determine how much. Like, if it's all the moving expenses.
You just make an additional month's worth of.
Well, you know, rents are.
I'm paying four thousand dollars a month rent, I'm, we're not gonna give him four thousand dollars to relocate, I wouldn't think, to the mainland.
That's what we're talking about, though.
I know, but two months of rent, and then, you know.
Cost of barge?
Yeah, when you move your stuff over, I don't know what that cost is. Is that seven or eight hundred dollars?
No, it's on the weight of what you're shipping.
Yeah.
So, so I guess that's, how do we?
We could, again, if that's the council's direction, in terms of looking at what those costs would be, we could obviously do, we could talk with the freight company, get some idea of that.
But the average.
They, they would know.
There's very few places here, that, very few, that charge less than two thousand a month, right? So, two thousand, two months, that's four thousand dollars to move. I think you could move to the mainland for four thousand dollars easily.
Okay, first and last month's rent, plus the moving expenses off the island to move the stuff into your new apartment.
Good point there.
I say yes, I'm looking it up and asking for a number.
Okay.
And maybe, yeah.
Yeah. But, you know, then I, I, I don't know. I mean, so a family's had a house for a really long time, or somebody dies or something like that, and so they wanna sell the house, and somebody's been renting it forever. But I guess they'll probably make quite a tidy sum when they sell the house, if somebody's been living in it forever. And they probably paid, yeah, okay, all right, I'm, I'm warming up to the idea, okay. Right, I just, I just wanna be fair.
I just, my experience with this has been that we'll talk about this tonight. We'll draft, we'll come to you with the draft ordinance.
And everyone will show up.
And then everyone will show up.
Exactly.
That's what happened in, in other cities. And so, you know, this is just the first step in direction, and I'd really like to start putting something, some.
Right, right.
Some pen to paper, so to say.
Okay, well, I think those are all good ideas so far.
Do you wanna pause on the, the eight percent versus ten? Or do you wanna include that for a part of the discussion, to have it as part of the discussion?
Put it in?
Yeah.
Because like you said. Put it in so that, so that people can discuss.
If we put it in, we can always take it out. We can put it in, so what, what is the number you want to put in?
So, five plus three.
So, have the max be eight instead of the state mandated ten?
Yep.
Okay, got it.
And so then we could have the community weigh in, the, the people that would be affected weigh in on it, and the people that wouldn't be affected if they're bummed and feel like they're, they're gonna lose their minds.
We're gonna take the state calculation, and rather than just the maximum ten, it's gonna be eight. So, it's, it's, you know, five plus, maximum is five plus inflation, but inflation's capped at eight.
Yes.
Okay.
Done.
Thank you.
Okay.
Two months, so we're doing the two months?
Two months?
Two months, yeah, plus the cost of relocation.
Item number seven.
Cool.
I don't need to vote on that, I just have the general sense of council.
Right.
I'll, I'll bring something.
Okay, good job, gang. I think that sounds like a good start. I hope the community feels that way, and I hope that when it comes back, you come out and voice your opinion.
I'm certain they will. Do we have any public comment on this item?
Nope.
Nope, okay.
Well, likewise, we have to.
Well, yes, I'm just.
Item number seven, uh, this time we're, item number seven is coming back to you. This is about a little over a year ago that we had this in front of council. Um, we're looking for some definitive direction for staff regarding council's desire, council as a whole's desire to pursue legalization of adult-use recreational cannabis in Avalon.
Right, so I'll, I'll just, I'll just sit back for, for, because everybody knows I'm the one that called this. I'm the one that, I, I want this, you know, just because I sincerely believe it would be a really, really, really good way for an additional income stream.
So, talk to me a little bit about, City Manager, about the numbers that you came up with, and what, what benefit, financial benefit you could see to the city.
Uh, regarding the taxes, so, so what we've, we did, we didn't, we attached the, last year's, the September seventeenth staff report with this, um, and just gave some scenarios regarding, you know, the revenue analysis by looking at, you know, we looked at other cities based on their per capita sales, based on, you know, the tax rate that we could charge, five percent, ten percent, and the maximum you can charge is fifteen percent. So, I don't know that we would be able to sustain a maximum fifteen percent tax rate on it. I don't think that that would necessarily be competitive, but we put that in there and just showed, you know, the quantity of cannabis sales and what it would generate based on five, ten, and fifteen percent tax. So, you know, what we're, what we're looking at, you know, on a ten percent, just say, the middle-ground ten percent tax rate to generate, you know, revenue of, of five hundred thousand, we'd need five million dollars annually of cannabis sales to be able to generate that. That wouldn't be, I, I think you'd have to factor in the additional, you know, we, some of that would be eaten up by enforcement and regulations and cost to the city to do that. Um, and, and Scott's had a number of cities that have enacted this, so I think he could probably speak more of the amount of time that cities might invest in order to enforce this, but, so, so those are just the general numbers we have in there for those different tax levels. And, and obviously, it'd have to go on the ballot to generate any tax, because we don't have that in existence right now.
The other thing, um, when you tried to figure out how much we would be making versus some of these other cities, we're not really open twenty-four-seven, three hundred and sixty-five days a year.
True.
I'm curious that the number might be less, because, because in the middle of winter, I don't think people are gonna come over here just to get their cannabis at home.
We have cruise ships.
Okay, and cruise ship people, okay, so, let me ask a question, because I haven't given this a lot of thought. So, I get off a cruise ship, and I go buy cannabis. Well, I guess I have to walk down the street and smoke it, because I'm not allowed to take it back on the cruise ship.
With you, yeah.
If, if, if the person with the license for recreational marijuana has a, a space with what they call a lounge, so that people could purchase their product and imbibe, kinda like going into a bar. You buy your, your drink in the bar, you consume it there, and then you go out on the streets. You can't bring your drink outside, same thing.
But I would think if, I don't think we'd put the cannabis for the lounge, because I don't know, and it might be something to find out. I don't know who is gonna rent to someone to put in a cannabis lounge, number one. And the amount of money that I think if anybody was a landlord and said, "Oh, man, they're selling cannabis, I'm gonna make, I'm gonna make bank, I'm gonna charge extremely high rent", and I don't know if it would pencil out. Again, we're closed up seven, eight months of the year. So, I, I just don't, I don't see.
But neither one of those problems are our problem. We, we are only the person providing a means to a license. So, I, I just wanna create the ordinance allowing it, and then it's up to the, the person to deal with all the other stuff. It's, rent is their problem, you know, all of that is their problem.
I'm not excited about seeing a storefront in our commercial district, in our commercial zone, because it is so small.
Well, restricted to not, not allowed to be there.
Well, I know, but we can't put it in a residential district.
No.
And the only commercial is Healy Beach or the City of Allen Park or Grant.
Well, but that, again, it's up to the person with the license to find the spot. We can, we can, with their application process, we can say that is not allowed there, no, you can't put it there. I mean, you know, but if we, if we don't even allow someone the opportunity to even think about it, helping us out with a new revenue stream, then it's just, it's never gonna happen. But I just feel that people come over here a lot and say, "Where's the nearest dispensary?" And if you, if you go over town and you look at dispensaries, all of them, ninety-nine point nine percent of them are so discreet, it's crazy. So, you know, it's not gonna be a glaring, "Come on, kids!", you know? But another reason is that cannabis that is sold at a regulated dispensary, the product is tested, and you can see exactly how much percentage of THC or CBD or, or whatever, and what kind it is, and it's tested, and it's safe, and there's no fentanyl, there's no dusting of anything else. So, I think that's another point, because it's already here, it's just illegal. But, I mean, you can walk down the street and smell pot all day long.
I know, I guess I don't, I don't think people would smell more, is the thing, and.
Well, I, I don't think that would increase.
You know, everybody's houses are so close together, that's, that's a big problem. And we have an older population that really doesn't, I personally like the smell, but there's a lot of people in town who really do not like the smell. And where can, and unless, I just.
I will say, we have a million visitors, we're not stopping them from bringing it over.
I know, that's why.
It's gonna happen regardless.
Then why do we need to sell them more?
I think to make money, is what.
I'm just not, I'm not convinced on that. Okay, let me ask you a question. If we put something on the ballot that said a five percent or a ten percent tax, can we also put on the same ballot, but, or do you want this at all?
Well, that's been on the, I'm sorry, Scott, that's been on the ballot twice, and it's resoundingly been voted no, twice. And, and it was on, I think in twenty sixteen, and it also went down. So, in twenty twenty, two advisory measures were put on the ballot, and they both failed significantly. I think fifty-eight and sixty-five percent opposed it. You know, I, I think the, the revenue generating, while you could say it would generate some, it's, it would, it's speculative what one storefront would generate. Most of these other cities that we looked at had multiple, multiple storefronts.
Well, we'll tell you that a lot of these cities are ours, including West Hollywood, Santa Ana, and their experience has been, yes, in fact, this, you do get revenue from this, but there are also costs that don't a hundred percent offset that. So, it's still a net positive, but not as positive as people thought. And when I talked with the city attorneys of these cities, those cities have made a social determination to have this product available in them. It, it has some economic benefit, but it's largely been, you know, a social, a, a social thing that we wanna be, you know, provide this, the ability of our residents, if, you know, to, to, to have this for their, either their personal needs or medical needs.
Well, on the medical stuff, I don't know, I'm really curious to see how many new medical places they're gonna do. I know they're gonna do it properly and whatever, but I wouldn't, I don't know how much money it is. Is there? Is there any way we can tax the medical? We didn't before.
You'd have to go to the voters.
Okay. Because the medical is cheaper than, than will be in any storefront, for sure, because there's no tax on it, I would think.
Right.
And just about anybody in this room could get on the phone right now and get your.
Part.
Permit.
Right.
And so why wouldn't you want to be delivered to your home, delivered for free, and not have to pay tax?
So then, can we amend the current license to allow for non-medical? Oh, okay.
Well, not medical delivery?
Yeah, so have it be recreational and.
It's an ordinance, you could always amend your ordinance. The issue is, is that you, you can make a social determination that you want to have recreational cannabis in Avalon. You can do that by amending your ordinance, period. You get no revenue from that. The only way to get revenue is to go, is to an amendment of the ordinance concurrently with, and you do it via a ballot initiative, concurrently with the tax, because you don't want to, well, I mean, you could make a social determination that you want to have recreational cannabis in Avalon without getting any revenue. You could do that, you don't need to go to voters for that. But if you want tax from it, you have to go to the voters.
Well, then I don't think you'd be for, you'd be in favor of that, because you want us to get some revenue.
Well, yeah. You know, I mean, that was my main point, but, you know, shoot, if we can, you know, service the people. But you were just talking about putting a tax on the medical.
I'm just bringing it up.
Right.
But that has to go on the ballot as well.
Any taxes has to go on the ballot, I get that. But also, I mean, another thing, I know it gets a bad rap, it's just, you know, from Reefer Madness and all of that kind of stuff, and it's a gateway drug, and ra 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 ra, all that stuff. But Matt was up here telling us about all of the domestic violence and all of that stuff, and he wants to have an alcohol program on the island, blah, blah, blah. People who imbibe in cannabis do not get in big, giant rows like that, right? Matt, are there statistics on that? Do you have any idea?
I have to be correct, I think with most time, you deal with someone aggressively, it's going to be alcohol or illicit drug, and usually marijuana is not an aggressive type of drug, I mean.
Right. So, so there's that component too, in this, you know, idyllic tourist party destination.
I would just say that, not that I have any view on this, but just, I've got another fact, is that half of all, there was a recent study, last week it came out, that I think half of all either fatal accidents, vehicle accidents, or severe injuries had cannabis involved in the driver. It was fascinating study.
Half?
Half.
And the other half was alcohol?
Alcohol.
Or just an accident.
Or just accidents, yeah.
And I would just add, I think the social, you know, Scott talked about making a social decision if you want to. I think, I think that's the important message, is, does council want, is that what council wants? Is that the message that you want to say? Because that's what you'd be saying, is we support this, we want this, and have, have this storefront located in the city. And I think that that's, that's where you're at, because I think at best, the tax benefit is speculative. We don't know what that would be. And, you know, we have a small area here. The most common complaint I get on cruise ships, when people come in, is cruise ship people are here, they're on the street, they're on Front Street, either drinking or smoking weed. I mean, that, it is the most common complaint we have with cruise ships. And now, you know, the alternative is having conversation with these cruise ships, is that because we don't have a dispensary here, they don't have to check when people are getting back on their ship. So there would have to be mechanisms to check when they're getting back on, if we're having a dispensary. And the second part is, just last council meeting, I mean, we approved a port agreement for Disney under this theory of, oh, we're this family-friendly destination, we want to be partners with Disney, this is what we want, this is what we want to hold ourselves out to be. And I understand, Mary, that it's, you know, whether it's a, it's real or not, that is the perception, you know, what you said. And, you know, the perception is reality in a lot of this, and I think that that's, you know, two council meetings in a row, we're sending that mixed message of, we want to be partners with Disney, we want this storefront cannabis business. You know, I don't know that that's consistent.
Well, I think cannabis is family-friendly. But, so I will leave it up to you guys. I mean, you guys, obviously, you know what I'm all about, but, and I will, I will be fine.
I would be a no. I don't see the benefit to the community. The community has enough issues with consumption of different things. We don't need to have a dispensary.
Do you have an opinion on the bright side of the debate?
I mean, I see where Mary is, I appreciate that you're looking into this too, because I do believe that weed is safer than alcohol, and we have it at every corner in this town. And so I do agree with that, but I do feel like, hearing from everybody else, it looks like we're not headed there just yet.
I got that too.
Anybody in the audience want to make a comment? Bob Greenlaw, you got an opinion?
Perfect.
It's interesting, it's interesting, because the staff here are, what's that?
I think it's an awful lot.
Okay, there's Val. And you know, we don't hear from staff, and you are also residents of the city of Avalon.
Good point, great point.
Oh, we got 60 employees, and how many, how many of them ever come to us and go, eh, you know? So I think they should, they have a vote in this town, and I think they should be more verbal.
I think I'm hopeful to see positive impacts of having a medicinal marijuana system in place. We haven't, and one of city staff, who shall remain nameless, mentioned this to me today. We haven't seen the effects of what that system looks like yet, because when the previous proprietor started, COVID hit. And so we have no idea really how that's going to go, or how that's going to hopefully provide relief for a number of people who actually need it as a service, and need it as a daily use or weekly use. I think if we were to do anything, of course, I would say, yes, let's put it back out to the voters, but I don't know that we're in that space yet. I think, I think the mentality around marijuana as more than a drug has changed a lot in the last 10 to 20 years. I don't know that it's changed enough in this community for that to happen. So, that's, yeah. I'm hopeful to see how the medical cannabis goes in town, and see if that is a positive impact. And I think it may provide enough of an outlet for most people in town to be able to gain access to safe cannabis, for now. I don't know if, in a few years, that might change.
The only other thing is if we regulate it to just edible.
There would be no smell.
I mean, the number of people who have restaurants and coffee shops.
Chiming in a little bit.
Who have restaurants and coffee shops that provide marijuana baked goods and food experiences is growing, so.
Right.
I'm not saying that I would be necessarily in favor of that, but maybe that's the way to go.
And I am not, I, if people want to partake, perfectly fine. I'm from the generation that did partake. I did inhale, but I don't need to see a dispensary that, you know.
But it looks like an iPhone shop now, instead of a head shop.
It does.
It's very different. They're gorgeous. I'm like, wow, that's, that's a lot of money you invested in that design.
Well, council staff, I appreciate your input and your time. I just wanted to, because I felt that further discuss, I mean, earlier discussions wasn't as definitive as this one. So that's what I was chasing. I wanted to know exactly where we all stood. So thank you very much.
I appreciate you, Mary, for taking that on.
No worries, yeah, no worries. Thanks.
First, phones start rolling up, we'll bring it back on the agenda.
But we'll have people partake before we talk about landlord tax.
We'll have some gummies at the door.
As long as you're ready, we're set. Thank you, Mary.
Oh, boy.
Sure. Okay, item number eight.
Item number eight is under general business. The item is a city council acting as the housing authority. So we're, Bob Greenlaw's here to talk about the 206 East Whitley retaining wall change order.
I think we have a couple slides.
There we go.
Yeah, it's good, yeah, okay, yeah. Couple of those. Okay, so this item considers construction, I mean, a change order for, in the range of $270,000. So this is how we got there. So the original scope on the replacement retaining wall was to remove the existing concrete retaining wall, which we have already, and we've left a large hole there next to the Hermosa Hotel, and then replace it with a mechanically stabilized earth, MSE wall. Same kind of thing that we're doing at the landfill, okay? And it's a great product, it's not, it's not a problem with the product. And it, it was what we thought going to be a great product for this project. Let's see.
It has to be on the, there we go.
Has to be, okay. So we're looking toward the house, housing right now, and so you can see the excavation. We have put the first part of a CMU wall, so a concrete block wall, which was to receive the mechanically stabilized earth wall. And how you build these is you have to have a substantial footing. See if I can go back to the other one. Where do I have to point it?
There you go.
There we go. So, and I was trying to get back to the other one.
Slide two, Bob?
There's only two pictures.
Yeah, two pictures. Give me up the top one.
The very top, H2Y?
No, no, the second one. Photo one. Okay, so we're looking at the block wall there, and there is a footing that this tied in, and that's right at the property line of the Hermosa, right where that chain link fence is with the fabric on it. And that was where we were going to build the footing. And then you stack three blocks, and then you put a grid in, and then you put dirt in, and you compact that. You put three more blocks, and you keep on repeating this, and it has a batter to it. And so that's what that concrete block wall was, to accept that wall there, we were going to tie it all together. Okay, this is no problem in this area, it worked really well. Then we get to the second photo. Now I'm looking back the other direction, and we depended on, if you look to the, to the center of the photo there, and as it kind of steps up, there's another pink wall there, retaining wall. And we were depending on that wall to start our, our MSE wall, okay? Well, once we had to get some further engineering from the MSE block manufacturer, he said, no, I'm not going to accept that, I want you to keep on going back down. So we kept on going back down. Now we're looking what's down below at the Hermosa, and it started creating some problems. And we said, forget that design, we need to go back to a gravity retaining wall. So just brute force here, put in, you know, a two-foot thick footing that would be in that first picture's excavation there, and then come up with rebar and start putting 16-inch wide block that was going to be filled with concrete. And then every seven feet, we're putting what is a number nine rebar, so inch and an eighth rebar tying back 10 feet into that soil bank there, okay? All of that, because it's going to have what we call a surcharge, the potential for another four to five units being built on the front of that site. Because you've got to be highest investment, we're trying to create housing here on the island. So we need to make sure that we get the density that we are trying to achieve here. So that whole redesign is in the $270,000 range. And so we have ample funding in that fund, and so that's what we're asking for, is to approve this change order, and we can move forward. I know it's been quite some time since we've been trying to work through this problem, but Jim Huffman with Jordanall Construction said that he would restart, you know, at November 10th. So we get going on it, and then hopefully we can finish it by the end of the year here, or what we needed to do. Okay, so that's, that's what we're up to. Any questions? Okay. And remember, this has the frontage, it helps with all the frontage on East Whitley too. It's not just the housing site. We get finished with this, that whole corner, which has been a problem there, it will have more efficient parking, and it'll be cleaned up, okay? Safer.
Well, thank you, council. With your pleasure.
I move to authorize the city manager, who's designated to execute a First Amendment to the construction contract between the city of Avalon and Jordanall Construction, Inc., incorporating change order number one, and increasing the contract sum by $270,000 for a total not to exceed amount of $987,255. And two, amend the fiscal year 2025-2026 budget by allocating an additional $170,000 to capital improvement project number 205015, fund number 15325-6547.
I'll second.
Move this second, I call for the vote.
Paul, I ask.
Here, we have three closed sessions, we have two closed sessions. All closed sessions, this city negotiator is the city manager. All involve price in terms of payment. Two of those closed session involve either company properties, which are listed on items number one and two. Item number three concerns all those properties with which the city is the landlord, and we've listed all the tenants of those properties.
You're leaving? Call up.
I guess everybody's gone by the time we get back, go Dodgers.
Great, Evan, great, Evan.
Yes. Absolutely.
Did she say go Dodgers?
I did, you hurt me.
Great, Evan.
Great, Evan.
Before you go in, make you take a seat.
Yes, absolutely.
Did she say go Dodgers?
I did. You hurt me.
Sorry.
I'm ready.
Go Dodgers.
Great, Evan.
Great, Evan.
Thank you.
Before you go in, make you take a seat.
Yes, absolutely.
Did she say go Dodgers?
I did. You hurt me.
Sorry.
I'm ready.
Go Dodgers.
Great, Evan.
Great, Evan.
Thank you.
Before you go in, make you take a seat.
Yes, absolutely.
Did she say go Dodgers?
I did. You hurt me.
Sorry.
I'm ready.
Go Dodgers.
Great, Evan.
Great, Evan.
Thank you.
Before you go in, make you take a seat.
Yes, absolutely.
Did she say go Dodgers?
I did.
You hurt me.
Sorry.
I'm ready.
Go Dodgers.
Great, Evan.
Great, Evan.
Thank you.
Before you go in, make you take a seat.
Yes, absolutely.
Did she say go Dodgers?
I did.
You hurt me.
Sorry.
I'm ready.
Go Dodgers.
Great, Evan.
Great, Evan.
Thank you.
Before you go in, make you take a seat.
Yes, absolutely.
Did she say go Dodgers?
I did.
You hurt me.
Sorry.
I'm ready.